Okay, thank you. Well, here we go for June the 18th. Wow, June the 18th. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for June 18th. And I see the chief of police is here, so who's ever double parked out there, please move your car. Okay, try humor. That's a try. We have, we've started every, since I've been mayor, fifteen minutes before we actually opened up the meeting. If anybody from the audience would like to talk to council, please come on up informally and/or formally if you'd like and tell us what you're thinking. You have three minutes. That's gonna go on during the...
Citizens.
Citizens, right. These are just people from the audience that would like to talk to city council. We'd just like to have your name. And if we don't have any, we'll go right into the session. So if anybody would like to address council, go right ahead.
Moving on.
Okay. It doesn't look like we're rushing to the microphone, so I would like to then call this meeting for June 18th to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hammerick.
Here.
Councilmember Hockes.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Mayor, let's try this. Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Thank you, I'm here. Okay, could we have the invocation by the senior pastor, Paul Hinson, at the Royal Gorge Vineyard Church? Please, would you all rise?
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, I want to thank you for everything that I am and that I have, and everything that all of us are and have, for it all comes from you and belongs to you. So I pray, Father, just help us to become the best stewards that we can be for one another, for ourselves, for this city, and for all of your creation. Please send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all the people. I pray also for everyone who works for the city in any capacity, that they see their work not just as a job, but as a purposeful service for the well-being of all the people who live here, no matter how difficult some of us can be sometimes. Lord, guide and inspire the deliberations of this council with your wisdom and with your peace. This we ask through Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we have a written request from Lori Jenkins. Would you just have your name and address, please, Lori?
Sure. My name's Lori Jenkins. I'm at 1111...
Could you pull the microphone down? There you are.
Sorry, I'm short. I'm at 1111 Myrtle Lane, and I just really wanted to come here and introduce to you Kindred Kids Child Advocacy Center. I'm an advocate with Family Crisis Services, and I will be the new coordinator for the Child Advocacy Center when we open. We are going to be a one-stop-shop for children of sexual abuse. So right now, currently, our children are being kind of run all over town trying to get services from, whether it's the Department of Human Services, law enforcement, courts, police departments, all types of different agencies. And so the premise behind child advocacy centers is so that families and victims have one place to come to, where they will receive wraparound services from law enforcement, Department of Human Services, mental health, and the court system, where we also have advocacies, advocates there like myself, to kind of help them through the process. So I just really wanted to come here today and say thank you for allowing us to come into Fremont County, and we look forward to serving the county and the citizens of Fremont County.
Thank you, Lori. And as you all know, that Lori will be off, your organization will be occupying a space in our new building up on Yale and...
Ohio.
Ohio, thank you.
I couldn't remember the address.
I walk by there every day, so I should know. I'm not quite awake, though, I suppose. Any questions for Lori?
I actually, Lori, I do have a question, and I don't know if you're new to the position, if you know, but I am curious about the rates or the numbers of our children that are affected by sexual abuse in Fremont County.
So in order for us to even think about opening a children's advocacy center, we had to do a little bit of research. We went out to the law enforcement agencies in Fremont County and the Department of Human Services and asked them to send us their cases that they have had. Department of Human Services is a little bit different because they have child-on-child cases that may not be prosecuted. So going to law enforcement, it is my understanding through my research that we had over 150 last year, just in, with our three law enforcement agencies here in Fremont County. That does not include anything else in 11th Judicial District. CACs are only put, one accredited CAC can only go in a judicial district at a time. So we will actually be able to serve the entire 11th Judicial District.
How does that, so that's 150 cases where there are adults that had committed crimes against children?
Those were all child sex assault victims. So I don't know the exact breakdown if they were, you know, adults on children or if there were teenagers. I'm not sure. I could get that for you if you needed that, though.
I guess my other question is, how does that compare to other communities, do you feel?
When we went to Alamosa, which also has a CAC very similar to ours, they're under the umbrella of their domestic violence shelter, which is the same thing here, we're under Family Crisis. When they opened, they had about 100 cases of child sex assault. The first year of full operation, they had over 300 brought into their CAC. So my anticipation is that we will get more, not because it's happening more often, but because we have, the services are more combined and we'll be able to provide better services, wraparound services for those families.
And are your services only after the fact, or is there any intervention or prevention?
We do have intervention and prevention. Once we're up and going, we will be going into the schools. We're gonna be talking to the school districts, the SROs, anybody that we can, anybody that we need to talk to to get in to have some of those prevention pieces. Currently, we're already working with some of the schools on the domestic violence and adult sex assault piece to bring into the schools. So now we want to bring it in a little bit more with the kiddos.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
What are your ages?
The CAC will serve children from infant to 18 or an adult with a disability, a learning disability. However, some of the services for children four and under may be limited just because of their cognitive ability to be able to do an interview and things like that. But that doesn't mean we won't be able to provide services. It will just be different types of services, maybe more geared to the family.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see it was laid in front of me, the lease. Do I sign that now, or is this something the council has to...
Sign the consent agenda, we'll discuss it with you.
That's right. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, any council member announcements? That's a quiet bunch. Goodness. I have one on the 27th, the COG, with quarterly COG meeting that will be in Wetmore. If anyone of the council member would like to go with me. As mayor, I'm on the board for COG. You might find it interesting, there's lots of stuff that the council governments does, and if you have time, it will be in Wetmore. It starts at 10 o'clock in the morning, and usually they give us a pretty good lunch, so that might motivate you a little bit. But if you'd like to go, please let me know, so I can tell them how many people will be attending from Canyon City. It starts at 10 o'clock, it will be in the Wetmore Community Center, and there is Wi-Fi there, so, 27th. And this week, a lot of us are going to the annual Colorado Municipal League meetings, and it's an awful venue, it's in Vail. What can I say? And so we'll be out of town. Okay? Anything else? Okay, wow. Yes, Mr. Meisner, I'm sorry, I should know better.
Some of us council people and city staff had the opportunity to tour the Journey Home, which appears to be an outstanding facility, and hopefully they'll be able to accomplish some of the things in their mission.
Yeah, it was. It's filled, too. Didn't they fill it that following Monday?
It's filled with 30 families. Most of those were from the Canyon City area or had a tie to the Canyon City area?
Yeah, there were only two that were not Canyon City people, so... What I was impressed and did not know, that every one of those rooms was furnished by a different individual, so they were completely furnished. And the American Family Warehouse...
American Furniture Warehouse.
American Furniture Warehouse gave a huge discount for new furniture in there, so it's quite impressive.
I was especially impressed to see that 17 children were off the street.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. Any other announcements? Under recognition and proclamations, do we have anything there? Okay, moving on. Adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Tony, would you want to cover that, please?
Yes, Mayor and council, 8A would award a bid to asphalt a half a mile, a four-mile lane with C-MACs or federal dollars. They pay 83% of the cost of the city, 17%. We received encouragingly five bids for this. A low responsive bidder recommended for this award is Keywood Infrastructure Company, amount not to exceed $541,920.70. Hopefully, the level of competition will be reflected in our upcoming 2A bids, but this is very encouraging. We traditionally get one or two bids for the C-MAC project, so getting five is really a positive sign. 8B would be awarding bid number 40-18 for the museum sign to Mountain Mason of Canyon City for a amount not to exceed $12,480. 8C is the item just spoken to you about approving a ground lease with the city and Kindred Kids Children's Advocacy Center for approximately 1,300 square feet of space and a new Ohio Street Police Annex for a monthly rate of $1,500. I gave you just a slight change. It is on page six, item E, where either party may cancel or terminate the lease for reasons, for any reasons, following 60 days' notice. I know in talking to the council, we wanted to make sure particularly the police department had that flexibility. Clearly, we're very interested in not only this tenant, but more importantly, the services they provide and the partnership that's been longstanding between the police department and this organization, and it will even be stronger under the same roof, so we're looking forward to that. 8D would authorize city administrator to revise and downgrade water treatment plant maintenance form position to end the salary range to a facilities maintenance technician, so this is actually a reduction in the scope of work and the salary. 8E would adopt and revise the Canyon City holiday premium pay policy at a cost of about $10,500 to allow, the police department and the water department traditionally have irregular type of schedules. They're not eight-hour schedules, they're traditionally either 10 or 12-hour schedules. Prior to this ordinance, they'd only be given time and a half or eight hours. We find that unfair. If you work a 12-hour shift on a holiday, you should be paid for 12 hours, so that's effectively what this does. So there's a small incremental cost to the city, but out of fairness and equity, we think it's important to address that problem. 8F would give the current, given the current droughts and fire conditions, coupled with the recent stage-two fire restrictions, which includes the sale of fireworks, and we recommend the postponement and the rescheduling of the proposed July 4th fireworks, which is, in good consciousness, could not promote setting off fire displays under these current conditions. We know the chief is here, if you have any questions for him, but I think we're both in unison that it's the prudent thing to do. Clearly, we would love to have fireworks on July 4th, it's very traditional, but given the current state of fire conditions and the drought and what's happening in Durango and other parts of the state, we think it'd be irresponsible to do that. And also, send the wrong message to the public that it's okay to have fireworks and fire at this time of the year. In fact, the chief had recommended, and we will follow up with him, that the city currently, I don't believe, has an actual prohibition for the sale of fireworks. And so, for example, right now, you can still buy fireworks. If we do something like this, we think in the future it should be coupled with a prohibition on the sale of fireworks within the city, so that both public and private firework displays would not occur. So we'll follow up with the chief to ensure that in the near future. 8H would request a waiver of formal bid process and authorize the purchase of a shade structure and infrastructure for Splash Pad from USA Shade Structure, an amount of $18,468,000. This clearly was an oversight on our part, we probably should have included this in the original design. I think we've been overwhelmed by the level of popularity and the early heat, and to address both, we think it's very important to have permanent shade structure at the, not just at the Splash Pad, but the surrounding kids playground is also extremely popular. In the interim, we will come up with some temporary shade, but because of the nature of these structures, they're not on the shelf, they don't build them and ship them until an order's been placed, so if the council approves this, they would start that process. It takes typically six to eight weeks, so really, these things won't arrive till the most of the heat has abated, but we'll come up with temporary, ten-by-tens, to support a shade in that vicinity. 8I would authorize the mayor's signature in a contract for services with law firm Kissinger and Felmer for legal services related to the electric utility franchise matters. And again, this happened quickly on Friday, so weren't able to get that information up to you, but I know Cory has reviewed the representation agreement, finds it's consistent with the city's interests, and so what we're asking you for is to be able to retain this firm. I know we've scheduled a meeting at CML with the particular partner involved who's a specialist in electric utility and also the regulatory process of the PUC. It's a whole new area for the city, and we think it's prudent to hire a specialist for this type of engagement, also given the time constraints the council has to try to arrive at a win-win resolution on our franchise by the end of this summer. Any questions on that?
John and Kristen, you two are on that committee, so you'll be working with this law firm?
Correct.
And you're okay with this?
Yes, we actually had an interview, had a phone interview with them, and talked through some of the issues we're facing. They do sound knowledgeable. We did ask them, they verified that they do not have any other conflicts. In other words, representation conflicts where they might not be able to fully represent the city, they assured us they did not. And it sounds, they sound knowledgeable and professional.
Just, this is a law firm that specializes in this sort of thing, franchise.
This partner does, yes.
That's why we're doing it.
Yes.
Okay?
We thought it would be prudent to have that specialized legal advice, because it is such an important issue for the city.
It is. Thank you.
And then one final item, we're requesting, you pull item number 11 related to the fire and building code. One, because Ashley's gonna be gone by the, for the second reading, we think that's imperative that the council, all council members be here. But two, we'll have further discussions with the fire department. Our interest here is not a conflict, we want to make that crystal clear with the fire department. Our interest here is to clarify who has the final authority, who's the final arbiter, particularly as it relates to the fire code, in the repurposing of our older buildings. I think we've heard from a number of experts, and you've visited some communities where one of the biggest hurdles in the repurposing of these older structures is the fire code. We want to ensure the health, safety of the people that utilize those buildings, but we also want to make sure that there's enough flexibility, that it's feasible and viable to actually repurpose them. So that's what we're attempting to do. Whether the final authority rests with the fire district or the city, that's a call that you'll have to make, but we think, like in all decisions, like where the mayor gets to break ties, there should be a final arbiter for these types of matters. So that's all we're trying to achieve here.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I'm going to make a movement, but first I would just like to say that I, we have in the past met with like the planning commission, we've met with our judge, we also meet with county and other cities, you know, to meet about mutual concerns about our city, and I would like to recommend that perhaps Chief DeValkio, if you're willing, I would like to meet together with you and maybe some of your staff at a meeting that would be prudent, where we and council can sit down together and we can talk with you and other interested parties about repurposing old buildings, particularly downtown, and how we can work together to make that happen.
Okay.
And with that, I'd like to make a movement that we adopt the agenda and consent agenda for 618, 2018, without number 11.
Motion's been made, I will need a second.
Second.
Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any questions? Discussion on that motion. Mr. Meisner.
Tony, item B?
Yes.
Explain that again, please.
8B, the signage for the museum?
So that's supposed to be sign?
Yeah.
I'm serious.
It's a heavy sigh.
Yeah, there's a mispronouncing there.
But why, why is that sign not part of this sign?
Because the totally different scope and mission. That's for wayfinding, for branding the community, to provide direction for the public. This is a simple identification sign for the museum. As you all know, it used to be the former municipal city hall. It still has that title on the building for education of the public to know exactly where the museum is. That's the purpose of actually getting a museum sign after all these years.
Yeah, and I think you'll see in the design, they want it to match the building so that it will tie together.
Yeah, I noticed that. I did, I did have to send my husband to pick up my kids from the day camp there and realize there was no sign to identify. But he found it, but...
It's been over 10 years since we've been in this building, and they've been miss-signing that building with the museum function for that entire time.
Mr. Meisner.
Whatever. Item F. So given that it's the 18th, would it be safe to assume that we're not gonna be able to prohibit the sales within the city for this year?
I believe the county has an ordinance, the city does not, and that's why I was talking to the chief. We believe it's in our interest to do that. Certainly, it's not gonna be in time for this July 4th, but for the future, and given the current conditions, not only today, but projected in the future, I think it'd be a prudent thing. The chief can speak on this issue.
Go ahead, Mr. Chief.
Mr. Chief.
Hello again, everyone. Just to clarify, in fireworks issues in the state of Colorado is a little confusing. Specifically, under Title 32 for special fire districts, we cannot prohibit the sale, use, and possession of fireworks. And the only way a county or municipality can is if they can identify extreme hazards to the community due to fire and what have you. Because actually, in state statute, I believe, it says that you cannot restrict the sale, use, and possession of fireworks for more than one year, and typically, you cannot do it between May 31st and July 5th of any year, unless you provide for those extreme conditions where the community deems it necessary to prohibit that. So typically, vendors will come into the fire district for their fireworks sales permits, and they'll set up throughout town. Now, we have some that set up in the county, some in the city. So the county right now has enacted a prohibition on the sales, use, and possession of fireworks in all of the unincorporated county areas. So for our fire district, the county is taken care of in that respect, but for the city itself, the city would need to enact a separate ordinance to prohibit that. And with stage-two fire ban right now, I don't see it dropping back to a stage-one anytime before the 4th of July. Matter of fact, the rain that we're supposed to get, we didn't get hardly anywhere near as much as we had hoped, and it's gonna be back into the high 90s again by the end of the week, hot and dry again, so...
Cory?
For what it's worth, my recollection, and I hope I'm not suffering from old lawyer's disease, is that home rule municipalities can determine to prohibit fireworks altogether. So if the city council is interested in looking at that as a total prohibition regardless of season and regardless of the level of fire restriction, we can certainly look at that. It won't, again, it won't apply this year, but it would apply in future years.
What's the pleasure?
That's correct, but the home rule is a whole separate and other issue on that.
Okay, what's the pleasure, council? Our attorney who's not suffering from, is it old lawyer's...
Well, we don't have time to do anything.
Not for this year, but the idea is if you want something permanently in place.
Start on a path to investigate that, talk to the fire department, maybe the police chief, to our rejuvenated attorney, and do you want to go that route? That's all I'm asking. Is that something you want to do ahead, not on, or do we have too many regulations?
I would only be interested if it was because of extreme fire conditions.
There'd need to be a trigger.
Yeah, we can, same standards that the chief uses, the stage-one, two, three, we use the same definitions and criteria, and maybe it's stage-two where you would prohibit the sale.
And what many communities do is they designate the city administrator so that it doesn't take a council meeting, that if it gets to a certain level, the city administrator by order can then impose the restrictions based on the ordinance.
Well, I'd be happy to exchange this authority for your fire code and building code authority.
But again, councilmember Meisner, with certain parameters. In other words, it would have to be certain fire restrictions, and then, and then the administrator would be able to issue the order.
I think it could mimic possibly what the county has, and I think the mayor should do it.
We'll work with the fire chief in the district, because as we can see from the Durango experience, that was a tension, I mean, established that one spark from one train triggered that, and it's 32,000 acres, thousands of people had to be evacuated, millions of dollars in lost revenue, and there's still the perception, the governor was there this weekend to drive home, they did it. Durango's open for business, but certainly the general public thinks the whole place is on fire. And that is one of the problems when you have a fire, people stay away. It's devastating.
So I take it, excuse me, I take it the direction is to ask our attorney to at least start fleshing that out, so we can take a look at it.
And I would, I would say that it's not too late for this year as well, unless the legal opinion is different, but I've been holding off the vendors from taking their permits out because of the anticipation going to stage-two and a prohibition being enacted. So as of right now, none of the typical vendors that set up their tents at the different locations have taken a permit out. Not to say that they can't come in and say, well, the city hasn't banned the sale, so we can do that. The other problem we have is Walmart has fireworks on display for sale currently on their floor space, and I believe Big R. might have some as well. So those could become issues that we need to address, and we have done that in the past, where we've gone in and notified them that they need to take those off the sales floor during that prohibition period, so...
Do you do public education at all during this time of year, under the circumstances?
For fireworks specifically?
Yes.
We haven't typically, other than some of our PSAs that we put out over the radio, through the radio station and our website, we haven't done face-to-face type educational programs, but given this, given the state of situation, I've been here seven years now, and I think we've only had fireworks one and a half times on the 4th of July because they've been canceled.
I have a...
Okay.
Another question. How are we looking at policing people who are doing them? I know, looking at the wrong feller, maybe.
Well, I actually...
But how are we looking at policing those who are setting off fireworks in their front yards and the streets and...
I'm sure most of you have lived in Canyon for a while, can know that the neighborhood fireworks are oftentimes better than the Skyline Drive fireworks. And we have quite a few issues with those... Uh, and we have quite a few issues with those, uh, a lot of times, with debris falling on neighbors' properties and starting small fires. Um, I have spoken with Sheriff Biker, and, uh, we actually, the fire district has an agreement with Sheriff Biker in regards to enforcement of the actual county ordinances, and we have an agreement in place with the city as well, uh, so the city police department can enforce those within our jurisdiction, uh, for the fire authority side of things. So, my conversation is that I think we really need to crack down on enforcement this year, especially if the weather conditions continue in, in the way they are going and anticipate to go, because the current, uh, fuel conditions and weather conditions are as bad, if not worse, than they were back in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve in Colorado, where we had major, major wildfires, um, across the state.
I'm hearing them go off in my neighborhood already.
Pardon me?
I'm hearing them go off in my neighborhood already.
Already?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I think we have that direction with-
Well, I want to, I want to know what, what the answer to her question is, is from the guy in the black.
That's dark blue.
Dark blue.
In dark blue.
Oh, excuse me, sir. Dark blue.
So, the, the answer to that question is, a lot of the fireworks that are shot off during the Fourth of July by private citizens typically are illegal and could subject the individual to, uh, enforcement action through a summons or some sort of citation. Uh, I, I do think that we, after your discussion tonight concerning postponement, that we need to start a pretty aggressive public education campaign about the fire danger and why it's important enough to send those off, and that enforcement will be, uh, taken for anybody who violates this during this time period.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I agree that the education's really important.
Very important, yeah.
So, as I understand the process, the, the, for the county, the sheriff came in to the county commissioners and just recommended the ban, and, and essentially, they approved it right there in their meeting. I don't, I don't believe it was an ordinance. I could be mistaken about that, but it was, they essentially approved it right in that meeting.
They don't have ordinances.
By the, the sheriff has to do it. The sheriff, the sheriff came in and recommended the ban, and they approved.
A little different setup.
The, um, just to clarify, the sheriff can enact the ban on his own accord, and that's what happened at the meeting. Uh, and at, at some point during the meeting, I believe, the fireworks issue was addressed, and they have issued a separate ordinance specifically for the fireworks-
Okay.
-to meet the state statute requirements. So, they, they have done that process.
So, they're in the process right now, is that right?
It's already enacted.
It's already enacted.
It's already, uh, the day they, the day they signed it and authorized it was when it went into effect.
I just, I have one more clarification, and that's just that actually, this year, that was so disappointing about the ban is that this year is the first year that the city was going to contribute funds towards the fireworks show, so it actually was going to be quite a bit better than the street shows. And so, we're, we're pretty sad that we didn't get to enjoy that this year.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, Councilwoman, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, uh, one good thing about that is, is I, I've had some conversations with the fireworks company and had this discussion about the potential postponing, and we would have through the end of the calendar year to do that. So, should fire conditions improve, we're not going to lose that. We may, uh, have it for New Year's Eve or whatever else, uh, the city administrator decides, but we wouldn't be losing those. It's simply postponement.
And I did have a question about that. What, what are we looking at for postponement? And you also mentioned alternative activities, or alternative-
Chief's an expert on alternative activities. As far as postponement, I think we pretty much are writing off the summer. Uh, the forecast doesn't seem to be very positive as far as these drought and fire conditions, so maybe something in the fall, or we have a very spectacular New Year's Eve celebration, but I think that's what we're realistically looking at.
An alternative celebration?
This seems to be happening more often. I think we should look into a standard backup plan for the Fourth of July so that we can celebrate every year.
Chief can talk a little bit about that. We've been exploring some-
Yeah, so several communities in Colorado, Florence included, have actually created a event that centers around water rather than fireworks, and so it's more of a, kind of a street party that goes along with cooling people off in the hot water, but I, I would encourage us to maybe follow suit on something along those lines, but, you know, do something that's unique, um, that would really stand us apart. But thinking alternatively, as opposed to fireworks that are so, so dangerous, maybe looking the opposite direction, that people can still come out, have picnics, uh, do fun things like that, and enjoy the parks that we have, because we have some beautiful parks that we should still be able to get people to take advantage of.
Glenwood Springs, I'm sorry, Mayor. Glenwood Springs, um, does a laser light show every year.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, we're getting off track here.
In the gorge.
So, it is agreed that we're going to ask our attorney to work on, we can flesh all this out and have those questions and a, a lively discussion on what that would be. Maybe we could have fireworks for Thanksgiving. Nobody else does it. Okay. Just kidding.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question for our, uh, city attorney, is if, if the sheriff passes an ordinance, which by statute he's able to do, um, or some sort of, uh, prohibition, and extends mutual aid to the police department, is that a way that we could, uh, no? It has to be-
So, the council would have to take action. So, if council desires to prohibit fireworks this year, you would need a special meeting, um, and you could certainly adopt an emergency ordinance to do so, but you would need a separate meeting.
Thank you.
Well, it's our fireworks. I think if we don't use them, we don't use them. Let's work on an ordinance for next year. Okay? Okay, that ends the, uh, no, okay, that's the discussion. Yes, ma'am.
There's a topic we have not discussed that I had a question about, which is the shade structures at the Splash Pad. I noticed that the staff recommendation is not to take the lowest-cost bid. Um, and I wondered if you could explain why, why that recommendation was made?
Yeah, Rex has done a lot of research on this and talked to other municipalities, and they truly believe this shade structure, USA, is the standard, uh, the, the platinum standard in the industry, and given it's only a little over a thousand dollars more, that's why he's recommending it, because its longevity and their track record with other cities, they seem to be the best product, and, um, that's the reason. I'm glad you asked the question.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I have a question along those lines, too. Will the, will they be providing benches and picnic tables underneath those shade structures?
We actually have benches, so that'll be separate. We're going to be providing benches within the shade structures, but the shade structures would be the major cost here.
Any more discussion? If not, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hacaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Next discussion is number nine, is consideration of expansion of the board membership for the Royal Gorge Regional Tourism Council. This is a second reading. Would you read my title, please?
Uh, ordinance number sixteen is an ordinance of the city of Canyon City, Colorado, amending section two-point-seven-eight-point-oh-two-oh and two-point-seven-eight-point-oh-three-oh of the Canyon City Municipal Code, expanding the membership of the Royal Gorge Regional Tourism Council.
Okay. Could I, I'll have a, do we have a motion? We have to, this is a second reading, so we just need a, a motion. We need a motion. Mr. Meisner.
Mr. Mayor, uh, council, I move that we approve ordinance number sixteen, series of two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hacaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Number ten is consideration of vacating public right-of-way to facilitate resale of private real estate without encumbrances. This is a second reading. Would you read my title, please?
Ordinance number seventeen is an ordinance of the city of Canyon City, Colorado, vacating public right-of-way in the city of Canyon City, Colorado, portions of South First Street and Highland Avenue.
Okay, I will need a motion. Ms. Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number seventeen, series of twenty-eighteen.
Second.
Second. Hacaz, thank you. Uh, any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hacaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Just one quick question, and then we're done. Quickly, on two-A, are the bids ready for bid this project, or, I know you and I talked about it, Tony, but-
Yeah, the survey work has been done now. There's a period for design, and when that is completed, Adam is here, should be in the next couple of weeks, and the bids will be prepared.